Cars, trucks, boats, motorcycles, RVs and ATVs, whatever it is you want to buy, West Tennessee Bank has money to lend with very competitive interest rates in terms flexible enough to meet almost any budget. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Lender Member FDIC.
We're going to start about five minutes early tonight. It's kind of warm in here and everybody's here. All the commissioners here as we go ahead with the meeting. We'd like to welcome all of you out tonight to the regular meeting of the Chesapeake County Board of Commissioners. This is a regular call meeting and we can discuss any kind of business that we're going to take this back to. First item is approval of minutes.
We're going to do a roll call.
And we have one here. You're expected to then.
Johnny Garner, here. Jerry Love, here. Larry Blackstone, here.
I can hear you.
Al McInnes, here. Jackie Butler, here. Tim Pro, here. Ann Moore.
Here.
Russell Fleck, here. Buddy Richardson, here. Jerry Emerson, here.
Here.
Sandra Hyer, here. Joseph Malera, here. Barry Smith, here. Diane Jordan, here. Chris Senon, here. Terry Vale, here. John Well, here. Mike Allen, here. Eighteen four.
Eighteen four. Okay, we're going to proceed with the meeting then. Now, the first item is approval of minutes of July meeting. What's our vote?
Second.
Motion made second. We approve to the minutes of July meeting. You're sent out. Any questions? All if I say aye.
Aye.
Posed no. Motion taken. The next election of a chair.
How move we, Mayor? Mayor's say.
We already had a nomination.
And a second.
And a second. Any discussion? We have one name mentioned. All in favor of Dwayne Seaton is continuing his chair.
That is nomination six.
Vote nomination six. So proceeding the elect acclamation.
Six thousand.
Okay. Do we not already have, do we have to vote on the first motion? Was the first, really it was a nomination, it wasn't a motion?
Yeah, the first one was a nomination. And then we move nomination six.
Okay. We're voting for nominations to seize. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Our next will be election of chair of appropriations.
Chair, may I nominate Barry Smith?
Please.
Barry Smith has been nominated. We have a nomination of a real nominee to seize.
I move nomination six.
Your second. Motion made to nominate the nomination six. Make a prayer of affirmation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed no. Motion taken. Congratulations, Barry. The next approval of legislature amendments. Screw your house up.
Mayor, we need the first budget item, the top four budget done separately.
Did you say you have a budget?
Well, we have budget amendments, but we need to have approval of the top four budget.
Right.
I've done separately of the budget amendments.
Okay.
Included through the top four.
Correct. If I'm standing as a career of this king, then after, after we'd already said the agenda and everything, that's why it's not on the agenda. Got a motion second. Any questions? If don't, if I say aye.
Aye.
Posed no. Motion taken.
Now we have budget amendments to follow. Budget amendments specifically speak toward a new part-time position for bus training coordinator with the new state law that was enacted after the bus accidents that occurred both in Jester County and Hamilton County. Law changed to require additional training for our bus drivers, additional seat time behind the wheel. And this is providing a bus driver the opportunity to serve in that capacity on part-time basis.
Will we approve this budget?
Today.
Motion made second. We approve to the budget amendment as presented. Any questions? If don't, if I say aye.
Aye.
Posed no. Motion taken. Is that it? Thank you all. The next approval of standing committee members. It's okay with y'all, we're the same as we were last year. So I'm presenting it to y'all. We approve it, I appreciate it. Motion made second. Two made the motion. Ten. Five second. Any question? Or suggestion? If don't, if I say aye.
Aye.
Posed no. Motion taken. The next is approval of resolution for cooperative purchase agreements. The school got one and the county generals got one. I want to do the schools first. This is the day by a school, let's just form a national, nothing without having to do anything else that you need, they don't have to be. It's approved by the state to do this, to the national, or cooperative. So we see a motion to approve this resolution.
I move approve this petition.
Motion made second. We give approval of resolution to the school board. Buy through the national purchase of corporation and all of the agreement. Any questions? Can I have a roll call on that?
Johnny Garner.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yes.
Larry Blackstone.
Yes.
Al McInnes.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Fleck.
Yes.
Buddy Richardson.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malera.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Senon.
Yes.
Terry Vale.
Yes.
John Well.
Yes.
Mike Allen, here.
Yes.
Eighteen four.
Okay. Now, then the county has one too, that's just about like one that the school board had. Says now therefore will be a presided Chesapeake County Commission assembled in record session this eighteenth day of September 2017. Shall hereby agree to the terms of the duly created law authorized the use of master corporate, corporate purchase agreements to who's ownership is voluntary and no cost to the county. Vote for that person. Motion made second. Give approval to this resolution. Any questions? I will call that, yes.
Johnny Garner.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yes.
Larry Blackstone.
Yes.
Al McInnes.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Fleck.
Yes.
Buddy Richardson.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Mike Allen, here.
Yes.
Eighteen four.
The next item to discuss is loaning for the county. I thought we were going to have this worked out for tonight's meeting, but it don't have. Attorney sent it back to me last week and I sent it back to the developer, did some work to do to it. So hopefully we'll have a better November meeting. This will take care of a lot of problems we have out of county with the, what am I talking about? We're complete with that. All right, any other, any other, any other bids coming for the commission? We've got, got a letter from the library board. Where it says the state law has changed and Ms. Hyers has been there for a while and I'm going to take her off. Do I hear a volunteer on the library board or anybody make a motion, make somebody on the library board, help you off the commission? You'll take anybody out? All right, Mike Allen, come on down. Uh, the next one is a grant for recycling. Daniel will be helping on this. The state has come to Danny and they gave you 2.2 million in a grant, is that right?
Yes.
2.2 million dollar in a grant to upgrade off of recycling, a lot of automation where we want to have the trustees or hiring the help up there. And Danny, let you explain the rest of it to them.
Well, you know, we applied for a grant issue earlier. Like I said, off of nine grants this year. We applied to one of them for a building to extend the building we have out there, restore it and any other expansion. Apparently they had 12 million dollars to give out and there was only two other people applied for it. And one of those didn't qualify. So they asked me to go to Nashville and I applied for 2.1 million more dollars. And it does have a max, which is a 10%. And mostly what it is, is to automate the sorting we've got. We have a sorting facility. We use trustees to sort the different types of recycling that comes in from Miss County and surrounding counties. And this will automate that where it's all automated. You'll still have to have a couple of people to run it, but it will be automated and it will be the staple of our facility. We don't own in West Tennessee, there's, they're building one in Marshall County, which is middle Tennessee, there's not one in East Tennessee. So this will cover all the counties in West Tennessee. And like I said, it does have a 10% match. They've allowed me to use the education that Amber is going to do to come up with 120,000 dollars of income. About 200,000 dollars we had to match. So that leaves me with 120,000 to match over two years. It's going to take two years to do this. I already have 60,000 dollar line out of in my budget is what's only used for that for this year and next year to take care of that match. So basically we only have 2 million dollars for 120,000 dollars, which is a pretty deal. Because the 60,000 was allotted to K-Bo and K Springs to replace the compactor. They are going to allow me to apply for the, the maintenance center grant they have to get those pieces of equipment for that. So I won't lose out on that, so it's kind of a ranking. It's just, we've already applied for it. I thought it would not today, but they needed about another week to figure it, so it was kind of just to let y'all know, you know, what we're doing out there. I wasn't applying for it. And like I said, it'll take a couple of years to put it all in. We've got to get more power out there. All that's part of, I tried to put everything in there that would, some of it wouldn't have to do it, and my guys wouldn't have to do it. It'll all be contracted out, put in by the people that's made it. That's kind of why we need a resolution. A lot of equipment, it's going to be 24 conveyors that we run out there. So they need to all, you know, follow it with the same type of company build. Everything has to be made, so hopefully next week, they're supposed to let the grant out by October the first. I think it's when it's supposed to come out, but they're trying to push it there earlier, so. Any questions? I did read from my board, I think a couple of weeks ago, we went over this with them, so kind of what I'm hoping to hope.
What we need to, now I have a question on this. Wouldn't you just need to give them approval to apply for this grant, accept this grant? Has that been, I think, first?
They will, when they come up with the grant, they will, you know, have most of the seen offered to you, so you don't have time when you can accept it or reject it, but it depends on if they change the rules and regulations.
Are you saying we really can't accept the grant?
We, we are, we're making a motion now to apply for the grant.
Okay.
You don't have to make a motion to, to, to accept the grant.
We have to approve contract.
Just approve of the project, basically.
Grant contract.
Okay.
I think.
Without objection.
So that might look. I make a motion that we authorize Danny move forward with applying for the grant and we gain it.
We have the budget, but you have money in your budget to do the magic, Andy and Ken.
I do. Yeah, I won't be asking for no extra money, so.
Commissioner, they got my motion and the commissioner, that's right. No, it's Amy's second. Yeah, motion, that's right.
Usually if anything, they ask for, one of the questions, I make sure that the money's there, you know, for the grant, I mean for the match. The money has to be there. And if it's not, then I have to have a resolution from, you know, if the money is there, so, because I give out a lot of things and I have the money, so I have to take it back. As a parent, they have worked at Nashville, they want to create a grant, but they, you know, you're following your money, they're working hard for this.
At least that 10% of 2.1 billion, that's just 210,000 dollars. If you got 120, we're going to, we're going to need 90.
Yeah, well, they have, they have worked with me to take a lot of it off there.
Let me take some more. Aren't we going to motion to apply for the grant? Any further discussion? Being there's no new money, then just do a roll call. No, we're going to do a roll call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed no. Motion taken.
Anything with just a second, we just, they've got probably 12 million dollars in their fund balance. They have two months to get it out before the government. Thank you all.
Okay. Anything, Commissioner, have you anything to bring up just then?
I got one thing.
All right.
I discussed it with the sheriff sometime back. I know that this corner block that joins us out here at the corner of Eric Vale Drive and North Church is on about a windmill. I know we, Troy talked to him several years ago about buying, they didn't want to sell it. I know they have sold some property lately. Sheriff says he thinks it would be an asset for property. If we had that, especially on grand jury day, and also I think we could keep it looking better. We own the whole block anyway, we might as well own it. I'd like to make the motion, approval of board, give you the authority to at least approach them and see if they'd be willing to sell us the property and if so, give us a price.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. I'll say.
We got a motion to give me permission to check if we ain't thinking about buying this corner property out here. Next meeting in November to have a special call. Any questions on that? If don't, if I say aye.
Aye.
Posed no. Motion taken. If you have something.
Yes, sir. On behalf of Sheriff Whipper and Sheriff's Department, the state sometime back passed legislation that basically allows us with your approval to present a retiring law officer with the bar when he's been issued periods. And that's why I'm asking for my, has he been approved for in the event of retirement? I can present that officer with the bar.
Motion, will it be approved? Motion made second. Give approval of this. Any questions?
That's good policy. The city's got that policy also. It's pretty possible to dedicate this.
What do you call it, time of 20 years? Well, say the time is 30. I don't think there's a restriction time wise. The, the law, the way I understand it, it just says a normal time, so it could be less than.
You ask for 20 or 20. You can ask for it at the time. Any other questions? If don't, if I say aye.
Aye.
Posed no. Motion taken. Thank you. We came to the city board meeting last Thursday, not a lot of, you're about $10 there, that doesn't matter. I'm going to let you two come here, come forward if you want to, and tell you what this is about. I'm going to try to record, I'm playing yellow tape.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here. Turn my volume up, I can lean into it a little bit. Does that help? Okay.
Stand over here.
All right, it's personal. So, it follows, as you heard several of you were at the city meeting earlier this week, I'm here representing Rebuild America. My name's Martin Kim, I'm vice president of the organization. And it was, rebuild was formed to provide and preserve affordable senior housing for low-income seniors. What we're about, and what we're trying to do is make sure that the investments that we make are going to preserve these properties for a very long time, so they're sustainable. What we have to do in that regard is, so for example, we're talking about tonight Heritage Towers. Heritage Towers is in the, on Wildwood, it's in the first area on the campus, it's 75 units of affordable senior housing. So the way that the affordable function works inside the towers there is that the residents pay 30% of their income toward rent utilities. The rest is paid for by HUD. So in 1983, this project was funded through capital money that came from HUD and then the long-term rental subsidy that we've been receiving since that time, or the property's been received since that time, those families. What we want to do now is take that property, buy it from Free Hardman, and put about 1.5, 1.6 million dollars worth of capital improvements in the property so that we can turn it and sustain it for the next 25 to 30 years. These improvements are things like a new roof, I think about 44 air conditioners, hot water heaters, new appliances, new flooring, lighting. That amounts to about 1.5, 1.6 million dollars. The way that works is that in order for it to work, we have to use this, this tool we're calling this low-income housing tax credit to help finance that. That's issued and managed by the state. So we get a tax credit and for every dollar, let's say that, let me back up. So the way this works is there's a tax credit investor who will buy that tax credit for a penny, say 90, 90 cents on the dollar. The credit against your federal taxes is worth every dollar profit deduction. So these investors come in and they buy these tax credits for 90 cents or whatever the going rate is, and they invest in the property. Well, what we're trying to do is make sure we're able to collect that money. This is a tool that's been created by the government to allow us to finance these, these needed capital improvements for the property. The only way that works though is if the operating budgets, every, all the deal structures, everything makes sense to all the parties, this includes HUD, includes the lenders, the investors, everyone at the table has to look at the deal and make sure it makes sense. If it doesn't make sense, they won't do it. Which means now we're back to just doing some bare minimum amount of work in the property and trying to make sure that we at least sustain it for the next year or two until we have another option to do something. So what we're left with is really a choice. And what it boils down to, and the reason I'm here tonight is because there's part of that deal that we struggle with is related to making sense for all the parties, and that is what's called the pilot. Or in our case, we're even getting a payment in lieu of tax arrangement with the county and the city to make the deal work, because otherwise, if, let's assume at the Thursday's meeting, there was discussion about, otherwise tax, taxes would otherwise be paid if the property were owned by a for-profit entity. Those taxes would amount between 30 and 40,000, I think it was 100 years, so that's a ballpark. The operating budget of that property is 800,000 approximately. So 5% of the budget would then become now, as this has been for the last 25 years, the tax exempt under the tactics of authority, the department's ability. Going forward, we have to pay that budget for that property taxes being 5% of our total budget. And that requires to really take a look at, well, operating expenses in terms of how that works. So would that mean that we can't have the three staff that are there now, we have to go down to? Would it mean we have a backlog of maintenance in terms of what needs to be done to maintain property? The struggle with that is while we solve one problem, we actually may create another. And that now HUD or the mayor's looking at it from a guaranteed perspective inspections, it's going to look at the property and say, well, we can't do this because you can't maintain property. If you can't maintain the property, they take away our subsidy. And then you can see the spiral it creates. So it's really a bad situation for everyone. So our goal is to try and figure out, using that government tool that's been created for us, that low-income housing tax credit, and it's really created the sole purpose of new construction rehab of low-income housing, which this is, for low-income seniors who reside in the property. So what we're trying to do is walk through this, this operating expense dilemma that we have and how we address it. The way that this typically addressed is, is we as a nonprofit, 501(c)(1) tax exempt organization, want to acquire the property through a partnership. That partnership is a for-profit entity, but only because of the government requirement that the tax is a tax or a for-profit entity. But for that tax credit program, it wouldn't be an issue. We need to have that for-profit entity on the front end. So when we're in the back and we're controlling interest management, you're a partner of the partnership that's owning and managing the property. So all that to say, currently there's no tax on property, no property tax to pay in county or city. We're proposing that that continue under what's called a pilot program, a payment in lieu of tax program, where it continues to use zero or we have to, or something close to a non-hold, so we can continue to operate for the next 20, 25 years at the same budget that we've been at for, you know, this period of time. So it's really a matter of trying to balance our operating expenses to make sure we can take care of the seniors. The alternative to that, if we say, you know what, we are going to take the pilot and we're going to look at it, we're going to charge you what you're going, you know, say back to that 40,000, we're going to charge taxes in the amount of what it would be for if it were a for-profit entity. Our alternative is the fallback, is to say, well, we'll just let Free Hardman keep it and we can put in 100, 200,000 dollars worth of work in the property, most of which would not be seen or felt by the residents. And we'll just really be kicking the can down the road, if you will, and we have to go through the process again at some point in the future just to make sure that we're staying, just be on the process and maybe approve it. That said, the other alternative is that we acquire and do the same thing, just put that in, you know, 100, 200,000 dollars worth of work, but that doesn't really achieve the purpose of, of our desired outcome, that is to preserve this property, to maintain it, prove it so that the seniors have a quality living environment and it sustains it for a certain period of time. Now, I'm not here seeking approval for anything, I'm, I'm just trying to be able to be in a position to answer questions. And if I need to offer up an option, an opportunity rather, to come back with the developer, with, we saw last week, Stacey Watson, and work through maybe a working session on the details of the transaction, to talk about any other questions that I might not be able to answer, but I just wanted to make you aware of where we were. We do have, Richard's helped me with a bit of a document that kind of lays out present status, I'd be glad to pass that out with you permission, just so you have a document, a walk away document to look at, relative to the present status, like where we are right now.
Are you saying that the facility now is not up to standard to take care of our senior?
It, it, I'm not saying it's not up to standard, no sir. I'm saying that there are things that we want to do, keep it and improve it where it can be sustained for the next 20, 30 years.
I can understand the route.
Yes, sir.
But I, I don't think all hot water heaters have to be replaced at one time, would it?
I think the idea is to go ahead and invest funds and make sure that we, we've got an opportunity right now where this tool is available for us to give the money that we need to do it. As I mentioned, it's a very tight operating budget for us, and it's, and I say very tight, it's a zero-based budget. HUD looks at that budget and manages us to the point where if we don't spend it, they take it away. So it's a, a zero-based budget. So I would, I would say, and that answers your question, if we can make this deal work, get the funds that we need to replace them, absolutely go ahead and do that. And, and for example, we're not replacing every air conditioner, so the 75 units running closing places 44. So there is some analysis that's been done in terms of what needs to be replaced.
I can take where it'd be a conflict, but I'm very efficient for so.
In terms of serving.
And.
And I understand that, and I, I am not in a position to argue for or against the existing arrangements. I, I am just merely trying to make sure that we're able to.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, and I can see where that would cause a lot of conflict with some of these other people that may be getting, pay taxes and you getting free taxes.
Well.
And you're going to be a profitable organization.
Well, that's just, it's a technicality. Well, that's just, it's a technicality. I'd say in an ideal world, we would buy it as a nonprofit. We would buy it as a nonprofit, we'd own it and maintain it as a nonprofit and we'd stay tax exempt. But for this government tool, the low-income housing tax credit program, it requires us to put this for-profit entity at the table. But then the nonprofit that's rebuilt is right there managing and controlling the entire deal. So the only reason we have a nonprofit, a for-profit entity is that nonprofits don't pay taxes. So we can't buy, we can't sell the tax credits to the tax credit investors through that mechanism. It has to be there, and it's the normal structure that exists with those types of arrangements.
We see where you're coming from on this, but what we're going to do to affect the council here is going to hire 100 employees. And then they turn around and look at us and give them, want to hear about it. What are we going to give them?
Let me say one thing to you. I said 10 hours at the meeting the other night. Bear in mind too, now that they're going to go through the city to get some tax, uh, tax exempt bonds, is that right?
Yes, I hope so.
About six and a half million dollars. And they were to figure on that.
You also mentioned that Free Hardman remained ownership, that you'd spend like 100,000 of your, why would you spend money on Free Hardman?
No, no. If they maintained ownership, there would be need to be an investment of 100, 200,000. Maybe I misspoke, perhaps. Someone would invest 100, 200,000 dollars to do some minimal work. And that may be Free Hardman's ability. If Free Hardman doesn't do it, if we rebuild, buys it from Free Hardman, then we would do the same thing. But without the tax credit arrangement, without having that structure in place to get that 1.6 million dollars in, it would just stay as it is today in terms of tax exempt status.
Is Free Hardman, Free Hardman's not able to give the 1.5? Is it 1.5 or 1.2?
It depends on.
They're not, they're not capable of, or they're not.
They would have to become the developer. I mean, in fact, here's part of the challenge. There's what's called acquisition tax credits that we're also seeking. So the rehab tax credits and then acquisitions. So the current owner can't acquire the property. Someone else has to acquire. So that's part of the reason rehabs exist, is that we're acquiring the property while we're also rehabbing. So we're getting acquisition tax credits and rehab tax credits.
We get the paper money, the paper money credits?
Credits for the tax credit investors, that's correct. And in addition, it's a permanent lines. So there are other financing mechanisms that get us all the money we need to make it work.
Just exactly how old is the property?
I think it's 1985 is the age, if I'm not mistaken. I'm guessing that, I don't have the exact number.
This, uh, this payment in lieu of taxes?
Yes, sir.
Is there a fixed attached share?
So you want to, is that what you're asking? We would want to start at zero because that's historically what we pay it, is nothing. And again, trying to balance that against the budget. I would say, though, we want, we would like for it to be a win-win scenario for everyone. If there's a way that it can be fitted into the budget, that's a conversation we'd love to have, to make sure that it's something that's palatable for everyone. But it can't, it can't be at a level that creates a burden, as I mentioned, a budget burden such that investors and everyone who's looking at the deal and that, but I says, "This won't work. This is not sustainable." And they do these things all over the country. So they will look at it and say, financially, you can do this, you can do that, et cetera. They make us assume, for example, we have 100% occupancy of that property. But the assumption is a 95% occupancy. So we're constantly battling that. So we make assumptions in terms of managing this out over time. If we don't do the kinds of things that we need to do, it may very well be 95% or 85% occupancy. Then our budget becomes a bigger problem.
Isn't there a federal regulations, don't worry, you want to book it? The current entity, they get on physical, it'll be in the federal level requirement to keep it. So, so.
Exactly. So it has to be study sanitary decent according to all the H2S inspection standards that exist with that property. Which is why we would struggle, which is why they wouldn't let us go without appropriate double staff or maintenance in terms of budgets. We have to do that for the year now. So if we start having to channel that money, pay taxes that we haven't paid for 25 years, then now we've got to figure out what we do and don't do.
Question?
Yes, sir.
I was there the other night. All the discussions, either 20-year pilot or nothing. And discussing about what we do with every, all the other industry. The, no one ever discussed, well, is there an in-between? That, when we had this discussion with HUD and all stakeholders, is there an in-between that might make sense?
And that is exactly why, we call it payment in lieu. It may assume something, we'd like to obviously start at zero. But we would, again, every dollar that we go above that in terms of our current budget is something we have to take away elsewhere. But there are, there are possibilities that are between those numbers that would make sense, and again, allow investors and all the parties at the table to look at it and say, "This could work."
But I mean, just looking down the throat, right now, as it stands, we can't even see, it's even. If it stays that way, it'll still get the severance.
Right.
And that's for 40 years, 100 years. If there's a method and a plan that's workable, that I would assume, since they're selling, that's beneficiary of Free Hardman. I have another business that I would assume that I'd do it if you're on that one. Which is good for me and good for the city. If Free Hardman's benefiting, I'll let them speak for themselves on that. I just assume that. If they're benefiting somehow, if, if, people that reside. We all discussed the nursing home back a couple of years ago, or a long time ago. And we all care very much about our people, but same there, we have to bank. If they can benefit, and if there is a way that we can reach some agreement that gets where you are willing to make the purchase, to make these benefits to people that live there. And yet somewhere, not 20 years out, but somewhere along the way, the county and the city start collecting taxes versus zero now, that might be worth a discussion. Absolutely.
You do understand that. We got Villa, Southern Oaks, and I don't know if there's any others. What, what are the, why would they not come to us and ask us for a pilot?
Well, you've got her in your states too, and also, what's it up to her?
How could, how could we legally deny a pilot to them if we're giving them?
Our daddy said I was going low income. Don't. The ones that live there, they have to pay. It's not below income. The people living here, the seniors are, are low income.
Very low income, I think, but there is a low.
Each, each of the apartments and, uh, Barrington are.
Are low income, but if we give them to a profit or a corporation, they're not talking about it.
No, no, I understand, I can, I can, I can answer that. I mean, for a 100%.
These are things that we don't have to do.
I absolutely understand. It sets a precedent. I mean, and it's the same way, obviously, somebody's going to sell for this to go and play, and the pilot can play. I mean, they're willing to rock, you know, several million dollars on rehabbing part of our town. It might be worth a pilot at that point. You have to figure out that, and what they want to put into that, if there's.
A lot of limitations.
There's a lot of factors.
So the third, we don't. We don't, but the way I understood it the other night, 22,000, 31,000, 32,000, whatever it is, whatever it came down to. 32,000 dollars a year on this pilot is a deal breaker when y'all are talking about putting 1.5 million dollars in. Six and a half million dollars too. All that kind of money and 30,000 dollars is a deal breaker?
Well, I'm saying it's a question associated with operating expenses. So it's a, it's 5% of our annual budget. And it doesn't sound like much, but we're already at a very tight level. So, you know, this is operating a zero-based operating level. So it makes us have to make choices between what we can do and don't do for the residents at some point. And moreover, investors, and who do this all over the country, this is what we do. They look at this and say, "I can't guarantee, I'm not going to get involved in a deal that's shake it start." They want to know that, that there's enough staff, that there's enough maintenance, funding, all the things that are going to keep the property operated well in the future, so that it's over the next 15 years. They don't have to worry about our ability to meet the needs of the property. So there's, there are requirements for reserves to make sure they recover for emergency needs. It's, it's just something that is all established as part of the legal structure of this purchase. And this is what they require. And HUD's at the table as well, HUD approves all of this.
Did I understand, outside, in the discussion, outside of the city council meeting the other night, did I understand that the long-term plan was Free Hardman requires us to probably back it up 15?
They would have an option to read a purchase, yes. I don't, I don't, at the time, right now, I can't take what that number is.
It would go right back to zero, even if we did it. Even if we did it.
Potentially. I, I don't, again, I can't necessarily.
When you start off at zero, first year, and the next year you say, we'll give a pilot of 5,000, and the third year you give 15,000 just to reach the maximum tax.
It could be that, it could be a function of any number of things that you look at in terms of financial statements. We do audit financials. Again, I'm, I'm just throwing things out, but you're right. There are a number of variables that we need to.
Like something.
And absolutely understand that, and want to figure out whether it can be palatable for everyone.
And bear in mind also, they're going through the city, through their industrial board in order to get the money. So actually, it boils down to which one we left at the city anyway. But they ask us to discuss it and give them our opinion on it.
Five years, if you can make the maximum, what are the actual deals?
Mayor Keen, you want to say something?
Yeah. Just a question I, it's okay. Question I want to ask, I was really not clear the other night. If the city, city state not doing anything, can I assume that you're not going to be able to go to the dashboard and get these tax credits? So can I assume your plan would be, if y'all just take it over with no tax credits, no bribe desk, it will stay at zero?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was the question I was asking, because I think we, she really wasn't clear to that. If we said not to do anything, which some of us thought we might, it's still going to be taxable, a taxable basis. But if you're, you're a, you're a nonprofit entity, and you go out to the profit sectors, get tax credits, that's where it comes taxes.
Correct, yes, sir.
The reason, another reason I did this too, was when we, when Jerry's fore, our city attorney started doing this, we didn't, when he came back to tell us how this worked. If y'all remember, we didn't have to do pilots all the time, which were me, here, or in San Diego. Both, both bodies captured up. We both knew, and both voted on the side. This one, because it's technically the zero, and we were staying at zero. And they came to the industrial board, the county wouldn't have even said something. Although on the flip side, if they came to the Hill and Ed Board, the city wouldn't have said, "Hill and Ed Board reside," and they would have said something. So that was, that was that deal that really bothered me. It's the same law, if we do that, that's kind of bothered me because, to be honest, the county, by, by property tax, it would be more the city would be the property tax. That's the reason that the city council, I want to make sure the county commission was involved in the discussion of it. Because that was, that was that deal with that. But clearly, I want to be clear on one thing, because I think she wasn't clear as. If, if we don't give anything, and we decide we're not giving any taxes or anything, we're not going to give any deal or anything, it's going to go to nonprofits, and it still won't stay at zero. Because y'all are not going to reach out here.
We won't be able to give the tax credit to investors.
That was why, that was, she was, because we were all thinking it was still taxable at that. But, but, but that's, that's the reason, that's the reason I want to make sure the county was bothered, because there are a lot more factors than we do. For the city, I'd say, I personally, first, I think this is over the Hill and Ed. I think this is better, it was for, it was tighter, it was tighter camp. But we did one relation, because we're talking about no tax laws, which is, we both groups have 10 million borrowing, or anything. We're, they're on 6.5, our borrowing, which we get every 10 years. Every, every year you get 10 million of borrowing back.
The only thing, it's both being anybody, and I'm not saying I'm against it, don't get me wrong there, is what's it going, two or three people going to do? Are they going to come to us and say, "How do you give them zero?" Or can we give zero? I said, suppose that others, others came to us and say, "How do you give them zero?" We're going to zero too. Then what we then, we have a big problem.
Another question I think we asked to the chairman that evening, we were just clear about, is people were talking about areas to study. Hillview, Hendersonview, East Jalen, all these, or they, or what's the difference in your, yours and that?
I'd like to have an opportunity to research that for us. I mean, because I've got to believe that there is something that separates. I've heard, in terms of the low-income housing tax credit program, this may be slightly different from what the tax credit program there involves in. Or the pipes of engine levels, we think. And so that's why we offered tonight, perhaps, a chance to be back in the open, we have to do a working session with the entire board, or with the industrial board, and just talk through those various scenarios.
Mayor Keen?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask you, is there a, is there a deadline on, if you have to add? Do I like the decision?
We're, we're, my understanding, I was kind of hoping that they were going to do this in the years, so I get my borrowing card back first year. But I think we're doing, y'all talking about the spring. They're talking about the spring, so it's not, for us, it's not a deal. We were, I can't speak to half the board, but I think the borrowing card was not, was not a big difference of problems, but y'all have borrowing cards. But this, the pilot was something out that was new to me. And that's, that's really my call for county mayor. But it definitely affects the county. I want the county to be, Bob, is the city making on this? Kind of give some insight on it.
I've asked you this question before, but I'm going to ask it again because it just sounds so ridiculous to me that it's unreal. They're, it's here just giving us information. But it's just hard for me to fathom that this decision is not due to your six orders, but in, in some kind of law, in some kind of book says that we've got no more significant whatsoever. Are you absolutely sure?
They didn't know, this is Jerry's fore coming to us, showing us. And the reason why, it's in the law, I said, if we're not changing, the, if we left it at zero, we're not changing the tax structure. Just the same way, if they choose to go to the Hill and Ed Board, we wouldn't have a sale. The Hill and Ed Board might get this in from them. So that's, that's kind of, it's, it's, I asked the same question. That's the whole reason I called, Mayor Keen, was when Jerry's fore told us, I said, "I can put it, we always, we know how we always do this." And I said, "That can't be right." I said, "You know, we got, both bodies have bothered me. It's not, if you're not changing, if you're not changing the tax structure, zero to zero, and you're, and you're going through the industrial board, see what make the city, Hill and Ed Board, county.
Let me follow up that question with this. Is there any particular reason y'all went to the, to the city instead of the county?
You know, we were just trying to identify who we will be issue on.
We were never asking, right?
Uh, okay. Mayor Keen, can I, can I make an motion that, that we appoint one of our, whatever standing committee, committee, local property committee? Appoint one of our standing committees to work along with whoever Mayor Keen appoints on the city side as a committee, to study, to work with this before we make a decision. To be honest, if I make a decision, I ain't running, I'm not. So we make a motion, we appoint a standing committee to work along with the city to research this a little deeper before we make a final decision.
Good.
Crowe?
What about the budget committee? That be okay? If there's money involved, all right, everybody?
Also, we'd rather, please, please, please be, we have to be public. We've got six, you have the ordinance and commission to discuss this. They have the sunshine on us.
I'll admit my position that if I'm in my motion, I'd be pushing it on the city.
I lost on Florida to report the budget to, best to just further our ideas for the city. Is it pretty clear?
I want to question only about the, what, the terms of pilot of the nursing home? How long was it?
It was seven years, and the pilot actually, I would have to relax. It was called pilot, but it was always actually, actually, did it actually?
Money.
It purchased, um, first of all.
In regards to differences? I think I can answer a little bit of the difference by, how many calls have you had there in this daughter versus? I'm going to go.
There you go. There were five.
It's a variable.
There were five, obviously.
Great.
You said you would research and find out the difference in heritage towers and some of these other properties. Did you do that?
I would definitely, I would recommend.
I would recommend that everybody, everybody, for these committees.
And I'll probably wind up reaching out through Richard to several people who could help us identify those properties.
Everything anyone is, is necessarily concerned about, we're gonna get a bridge over thirty, forty thousand. I know what people are concerned about, what happens if, if the Chamber of Commerce and Industrial Board, they're luring out a big factory here, and they're gonna, you know, they're gonna bring in hundreds of, and they're gonna hold zero forever, and we just can't do that, so, so I think it's better to go.
I would say, I was anxious, so, just that.
That would be one.
Yeah. But we can, we can identify what was harder, and perhaps put somebody's interest probably in that, but actually not.
Follow that, I know you don't like to contradict yourself, but get back to my original, but, but to you, y'all asked for twenty years of zero, and my question would be, what's a nice and a twenty-foot mile deal with drills?
I think it's a story, sir.
And actually, you said it was five percent of budget, not a big four percent of budget, that was a big difference.
Forty thousand?
It's forty-two thousand. There's no big deal on that, but it was like.
Another question, the rest of the rent, maybe, right?
It's based on their income, so they're, they're around this space of whatever their income, thirty percent of their income is the rent they pay.
What is the top twelve of the union, about?
The, in terms of the rent, it's, it's.
For you?
I would be guessing, I simply was, I, if I were, we'll guess, you know, I would say it's like probably eight hundred dollars, or eight hundred, that's worth, guessing, they don't pay that, they pay thirty percent of their income, and then, then it's better with section income than to receive pays the difference.
Do you relate that about, maybe, eight hundred dollars?
The, the property receives the, the difference between what the resident pays and what the, the HUD is through the base.
Wow, true.
Right, that difference, and that's what the budget is based on, and then that closer.
Keen, go, let me go, sorry.
Oh, yeah, well, this is what we're, in terms of basis, wait, when we've done the pilot programs in the past through the city, typically, what we've done, while they're legally up to twenty years for the state, we've done it for ten years, and we've done it a couple of different ways, uh, ten percent the first year, we start off, work up ten, go up ten percent a year for the ten years, or sometimes it's been zero for the first five years, then twenty, thirty, twenty, forty, on up. So we got a couple of different ways, we're talking about some compromise between four amount and zero, that's typically how we've done it over a ten-year period.
If they owned it for five years and then sold it, what's the next thing they're gonna do?
Listen, we, we can try to, try to, try to trash this thing all night, I guess, but, uh, we have a motion, it's over, in a second.
True, second.
Just turn it over to the budget committee to work with the city, and then, not to make any decisions now, but just to work with them. Is that, is everybody's understanding of it?
Yes, I got one other question, but, it's appropriate.
Go ahead.
So, if there's seventy-five units, and you're guessing, uh, eight hundred dollars a unit, which is a massive amount of money, and out of that massive amount of money for the whole year, your, your entire operating budget is just eight hundred thousand, is that what you're saying, eight hundred, a little bit over eight hundred thousand?
Again, I was guessing it's the rent, maybe, or, that includes utility, and utilities, right?
That's included in the rent, what is it?
Well, the eight hundred thousand is total income, so that's the total income from this HUD and from the, for eight hundred thousand, total income per year.
And, uh...
Rest and then?
The combination of the resident revenue, which is the rent, they're thirty percent plus whatever the difference between that number and what hundred seventy-nine.
Would all of it go up to eight hundred thousand?
Yes, approximately, about seventy-nine, definitely.
The only organization concerned about, the residents, the only two things the resident could, they're gonna get it, their amount of profits.
Okay, do you have any other questions?
Man, I was just guessing on that number.
It's all over to it.
Do you have any other questions, I don't, or anybody else? Anyone after I have any question, anything I'd like to say? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no motion, cheers, the budget committee, budget committee will work with y'all and the city on this, okay? Okay, does anyone else have anything else you can tell the commission at this time? If, I'd like to, I'll tell y'all, Representative Steve McDaniel will be at the courthouse on September the twenty-eighth, from ten forty-five, seven thirty. September the twenty-eighth, ten forty-five, seven thirty, it's courthouse. And if you have one more chance, anybody of them gonna say? If not, charge a district.
Yes, sir, we have Ford, Alyssa Nicole, Presnell, Michelle White, Joseph Knowles, Susan Ross.
Move to approve.
Sad.
All right, for y'all, I tell them, I know I charge a district, yes, it's approved people from Notre City, so I did not stage it. Do what? What'd you say? We've got a motion, second, charge a district, see if you can discuss it. If it's on a fair, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. This concludes the agenda, one more time, if anybody else wanna say? Rest for ten, I think that's another.
Second.
Got a motion, second, adjourned, we can adjourn.